Okay, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers this evening, as well as those that may be joining us from home. We appreciate everybody hanging with us. We're a couple of minutes late to start, but I will tell you that we received quite a presentation, really well done, from Dr. Dever of Thomas Nelson Community College just before this. I would encourage all citizens to go back and see the recording of that, to see what Thomas Nelson does offer on the Virginia Peninsula today. And Randy, for our part, I would like to see us play that work session fairly frequently in the next two weeks, okay? If we can improve that. All right, I'll call this meeting to order, and I ask you to all please rise while I have the invocation, lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings in our city. As we move forward with issues before us tonight, we ask for a portion of your wisdom. As we serve those in our citizens, as we serve our citizens in the coming days, we ask for your patience and your guidance. In Jesus, in your name, we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) What do nations do to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
All right. Part of the great thing about being mayor is sometimes you just get to celebrate achievements. We're doing three special presentations this evening. The first one would be for Pat Green, if you'll join me there at the podium. Then I'm going to ask after that for Mr. Bill Glose. After that, you're going to read for us, and I'll introduce that. And then we're going to have the audit presentation from our staff, which is always good news for us, so appreciate that. So Pat, if you'll join me. Let me make sure I've got the right one.
Does that now?
That looks like you.
Looks like me.
All right, so this is a certificate of appreciation, and we're awarding this to Patricia Green for her service on the Peninsula Agency on Aging. She served there for us from September 20th of 2012 to September 30th of 2018. What I would tell you is, quite frankly, she has no limits. Pat is, runs our food bank down here. She bosses Buddy around quite a bit during the running of the, yeah, of the food bank. But people like Pat just know no limits, and they serve the people in our community so well. So we thank you for coming to see us this evening and for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I say, "Allegiance."
Absolutely.
(Applause) I can't tell you what an honor it was for me to serve these six years. After six years, they kick you off, so I got booted, and I am served now, or the committee is served very well by one of our community leaders. I gained so much more than I gave, and that was my only regret, that I was not able to give more. But I feel like Pecosin was well represented. I learned a lot. We did lots of things for the citizens 60 and over, and the Peninsula Agency on Aging Board is truly remarkable. I'm so glad that Pecosin is a part of it, and I continue to look forward to work with that group. Thank you so much.
Thank you. (Applause) All right, so next on here is a presentation for, a proclamation for Bill Glose. Is that, am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, Glose.
Glose, okay. And, but first, it is, it is my understanding, are you going to, you're going to read the poem to us this evening?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just, I thought so. I didn't see it specifically mentioned in here, but I knew that, I didn't know if I'd missed it, and it was at the Veterans Day ceremony. But, Mr. Glose, the podium is yours, if you can please.
Here, there, where?
Right here.
Okay.
Well, actually, why don't you do it over there? That way, they'll be able to see you. And if you will announce what you're reading and...
Okay, so this is higher math. I was, I served in the Gulf War, and afterwards, one of my classmates at Virginia Tech, also a Pecosin alum, he served in seven tours of duty, Iraq, Afghanistan, everywhere else. And just the amount of times that the, our soldiers were asked to keep going back over there was the impetus for writing this poem. Higher math. One plus one is two. Two plus two is four. Such simple calculations scrawled with chalk on boards black as dried blood. Tar-choked lessons that taste like ash. Once you realize that one plus one can equal a million. One mortar round. One soft body. A million gristled parts. How to snap together pieces of a puzzle, their edges slick as cherry filling from a pie? No one tells you that in school. They teach word problems instead. If Jack is traveling 10 miles an hour from A and Tom 20 from B, who will reach C first? What if Tom's Humvee crumples inward from the geyser of an IED? Will Tom rush into the swirling cloud to pull him from the kill zone? If Jack has two arms and Tom picks one up from the dust, how many does Jack have left? Two minus one is one. But also, two minus one is nightmares, two minus one is years of therapy, two minus one is perverse addition, loss growing into reasons for revenge. One in every five rounds is a tracer round in a machine gun's belt. Laser-limbed line segments that streak from your position to the sandstone rooftop. Shortest distance between two points. Puffs sprint across the parapet, climb down walls, lance through shutters and doors. Maybe the trigger man was in this building. Maybe not. If you're a good little numerator, never bite off too much of the whole. They might teach you algebra, substituting letters for numerals, how to solve for x. But I need higher math. I need calculus. I need to know when the area under the curve approaches infinity. Who do I shoot? Where do I point my muzzle when there's no end in sight? When every round fired has as much chance of doing harm as doing good? It's statistics, the law of averages, probability, and all its perverse permutations. One plus one is two, two plus two is four. I can sum these figures on my fingers, but I need a calculator to count the missing arms and legs. The flag-draped coffins. One plus one plus one plus one plus cemeteries and headstones, plus seven men firing three rounds each, plus one flag folded into a perfect triangle. White glove hands squeezing the hypotenuse as it presses its right-angled vertex into a widow's heart. How many star-spangled triangles must I count before I fall asleep? One plus one plus one plus one. Thank you.
I am so glad that I got a chance to hear that. You know, just fabulous. And, and Mr. Glose, I think when Councilman Hux told me that he had somebody to read for us around the Veterans Day celebration, I didn't know what to expect, and I certainly didn't know the depth of what you had written, so I really appreciate it. Council would like to show its appreciation and, in reward to you, a proclamation in recognition and honor of Mr. Bill Glose, the American journalist, poet, fiction writer, and veteran. And it reads, "Whereas Pecosin High School graduate, Mr. Bill Glose was born into a U.S. Air Force family, and after graduation from Virginia Tech, was commissioned as an Army officer and a paratrooper at Fort Bragg, and commanded a rifle platoon, a Delta platoon, and earned airborne ranger, jump master, and combat infantryman during his military career. And whereas after the military, Mr. Bill Glose walked away from a career in factory production, returned to Pecosin and became a full-time writer, winning such awards as the 2001 F. Scott Fitzgerald Short Story Award, the 2011 Daily Press Laureate, and the 2017 Winner of Missouri Humanities Council Award for Veterans Interviews, and the 2018 winner for the Hero's Voices Poetry Concert, Poetry Contest, to name a few. And whereas Mr. Glose is a highly respected journalist, poet, and fiction writer who has received national recognition for his heartfelt portrayal of American veterans, therefore, we proclaim it as the Pecosin City Council to recognize you." So thank you very much for your time, for your service, and for that poem.
Thank you very much.
Okay? And another hand for you. Okay, how would you like to follow that up?[762.19][762.19](Laughter) So this is our audit presentation. It's a little drier than what you got to hear before, but it is always an important story for citizens to hear how we handle their money.
Absolutely. Well, tonight, tonight we have two presenters, Logan Booth and Krista Edoff from Cherry Beckett.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager, and all others present for tonight. We are pleased to be here to present the results of the June 30, 2018 audited financial statements. I have here with me Logan Booth, who is the Audit Manager on the Engagement, and he essentially is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the audit. Just to give you a little brief about an audit, we are engaged, essentially start the planning process around April. So March or April timeframe is when we start the process. We do fieldwork through the summer. We come into September. We look at the final audited numbers. We go through our audit process, and then we wrap up ultimately the end of the audit with the presentation to you today. So an audit is a significant undertaking. The involvement of management, finance, schools, and many others within the city and locality itself is just a tremendous undertaking, and so we are very appreciative of the efforts of management and finance and schools and those others that we work with. So I just kind of wanted to brief you on how big of an undertaking and how much time it really does take from the start of the audit process through wrapping this up. So ultimately, the conclusion of an audit is to determine whether your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and whether they're fairly stated. And so at the end of the audit, we do issue an audit opinion. So these financial statements are yours. They are prepared and put together essentially by management. We conduct our audit, and we issue audit opinions. Those opinions are included in the financial section on Pages 1, and then also in the compliance section, beginning on Page 129. So with that, I'll really turn it over to Logan and kind of let you walk, him walk through the details of our audit results with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, council. So for the 2018 audit, I'm pleased to report we had a unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit opinion, and we noted no internal controls, issues, or deficiencies, so that's great. There was an emphasis on matter paragraph that you will note on the audit opinion, and that is related to a new accounting standard that was applicable for the year ended June 30, 2018, which I'll get into on the next slide. Additionally, nothing came to our attention where management was not in compliance with any laws or state or federal regulations, and there were no matters that would have a material effect on the financial statements. So per the auditing standards, there are some required communications that we need to walk through. As I mentioned before, there wasn't a change, or implementation in fiscal year 2018 related to GASB-75, which is reporting for other post-employment benefits. It's, it's an additional liability that will come on to, that came on to the books for year ended 2018, and it actually added about 20 pages to the financial statements. So in addition to the accounting policies, we are required to disclose the judgments and accounting estimates that management makes representations to, so those include the allowance for doubtful accounts on tax receivables, actuarially computed pension and, and other post-employment benefit liabilities, and then depreciation expense on capital assets. I'm pleased to inform you that there were no uncorrected misstatements identified during the audit, and there were no material audit adjustments identified during our audit, our audit work. So to continue, there were no disagreements with management during our test work, and we did not encounter any difficulties with management of city or schools throughout the audit. And we are not aware of any consultations with any outside audit firms or other CPAs. As noted before, we received management representation for the city audit opinion as of November 8, 2018, and we are not aware of any relationships within our firm and within the city that would impair independence. And then lastly, we do apply certain limited and other procedures over the management discussion and analysis portion of the CAFR, and then the other supplementary schedules in the back section of the CAFR. And with that...
So, in a nutshell, what did he just tell you? You had unmodified opinions on your financial statements, on your compliance with laws and regulations, and on our testing of the federal grant compliance. So that's three audit opinions that get issued. Unmodified, that does mean a clean opinion. Ultimately, it's the best result you could hope for in an audit. So with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Actually, I took it as good news, but I've listened to several of these. It is kind of straightforward and dry, and unmodified doesn't sound really exciting.
No.[1140.58][1140.58](Laughter)
But unmodified to the ladies sitting over there that do this every day, they're very happy.
Very.
So, so what you've just told us is that City Pecosin does a good job in accounting for their money, for the taxpayers' money. And what does it mean to the taxpayers that we try to do the best that we can here with city staff in managing the people's money and never forgetting that it is theirs? All right? So thank you very much for what you do. It's an important part of us being as solid financially is, knowing that y'all are behind us, and we always like that, that backup, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
And for our citizens listening at home, there will be a link on our website that they'll be able to go and look at this document if they choose to, because I know, I know if anybody's watching from home, they see this and wonder where they can get it, it will be on our website.
Okay. And it's also available in our library for those who'd like to put their hands on a hard copy. Okay, I'm going to pause the meeting here and ask council if we're prepared to modify the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move that we add an item under New Business, which will be Item Number 3, which is a resolution to oppose offshore drilling off the coast of Virginia.
Second. Okay, motion made. Second, that we modify the agenda. Okay? Let me see, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Going back to the agenda now, I'd like to open the audience for visitors. Now is the time to just, to let council know of thoughts of, thoughts or concerns. I will let you know that if you're here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Andrew Fizera, and as far as that particular time, that'll be in the public hearing, and I'll open it at that time, so don't come to the audience for visitors for that. Is there anybody here that would like to talk to us about another issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our minutes of a regular session of October 22, 2018.
Second.
A motion made in second, that we approve the regular session minutes of October 22. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Abstain.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, and the work session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session on the same evening.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, that we approve those also. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Evie, please.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Abstain.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Okay. Section F of the agenda is public hearings. We do have a public hearing this evening, is based on a request for Mr. Andrew Fizera applicant, and Carol Moore and Olivia Grebel trustees for conditional use permit to authorize the establishment and operation of a tattoo and piercing studio at 501 With Creek Road, Suite 206. Who's going to do the presentation for staff?
I'm imagining.
All right.
Tonight's presentation will be for a conditional use permit for 501 With Creek Road, Parcel This request is to establish and operate a tattoo and piercing studio within Suite 206 of the Moore Building. This property is currently zoned B2, business and commercial. However, tattoo and piercing studios are not specifically permitted within the B2 district. Therefore, the applicant is making a conditional use permit request as per Article 1, Section 1-8 of our zoning ordinance. This request was presented to the Planning Commission on October 15th, and was recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero with one abstention. So this is the property in question. The Moore Building is highlighted in the center here, just to show you adjacent properties. So this is along our main commercial corridor. To the north of this building is undeveloped field. To the west is some storage area and under the more undeveloped woodland. To the south is another building, Building 2. This is actually Building 1 of a two-building commercial condominium complex, but this second building has Mr. C.'s Pizza, a thrift store, and furniture sales store there. And across the street, we have Pecosin Pharmacy, and Cool Wave Car Wash, and one small apartment complex right here on the corner of With Creek and Firth Lane. But just to show you the zoning map, as you can see, all adjacent properties are zoned B2 for business, commercial, or over here, the purple is general, commercial, GC. This is just a plan view of the condominium development in question. So this is the building they would be relocated to, and this is the Mr. C.'s thrift store building next year. The entire rest of the lot, almost entirely, is paved parking area. So some considerations, the building in question, the available shopping center is approximately 9,000 square feet, and is divided into retail suites on two floors. Existing tenants include a hairstylist, skincare clinic, framing store, and a realtor's office. The property does have direct access from With Creek Road and plenty of parking, as I have shown. The traffic and parking impacts are expected to be as or less impactful than similar retail uses. Also, architectural review board approval would be required for any new signage the applicant would be making. So we do have some pictures of the property. This is in the parking lot facing north. Suite 206 would be on the second floor. It would be in the back from the street, so it would be in this part of the building. Access would primarily be through a stairwell through this entryway here. This is the front of the building from the street. There is another entryway through there and up the stairs. And this is just a picture to the north showing you the vacant property directly north of it. So this is the second-floor hallway of the Moore Building, showing you what it looks like inside. Down this hallway and through that door is the entryway to the suite in question. This is kind of the lobby area of the suite. The entrance, the main entrance to the studio would be through here. Some pictures of the interior of the building as it looks right now. This is a second employee entrance. The stairwell down here is the one that leads out into the parking lot from the first image. And one final image of the building from that employee entrance from the other side. So some considerations, more considerations. Section 54 of the city code contains standards for tattoo studios. These include disclosure, hygiene, licenses, waivers, proof of age, record-keeping, inspections, cleanliness, and permitting. This use will require the issuance of a permit from the Virginia Department of Health. The applicant has previously obtained a permit and business license for the operation of a similar tattoo studio on Virginia Beach, and demonstrated that he would be willing to do so for this studio as well. And these are two images the applicant has provided of former tattoo studios he has operated, just to give you an idea of what the interior may look like. So proposed conditions for this CUP. Number one, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. Number two, the approved use permit shall be only for a tattoo and piercing studio. If the use changes or another form is proposed, we will be evaluated by the zoning administrator to determine if the new use meets the intention of the permit. Condition three, prior to any onsite expansion, the zoning administrator will review the proposal to determine whether reconsideration is needed. Condition four, if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for two or more years, the permit will be null and void. And condition five, council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. So any additional conditions are at the discretion of council. The applicant has provided some additional information regarding hours of operation, number of employees and workstations, and security measures for his use. I believe they're included in your packet, but you are available to choose anything else from that information, or anything else to include as additional conditions if you desire. That is the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, or counsel? Yes, go ahead.
How long is the conditional use permit? Is it, does it have a, is it good for a certain number of years, and then has to be renewed? Did I miss that?
I don't think that a timeline was specified, though one could be added as an additional condition.
Okay.
Okay, it is a public hearing. I'll open that public hearing, and this is your time to speak, and if, when you come to the podium, if you just give us your name and your address for the record, so that Evie can get you properly logged through. your name and your address for the record, so that Evie can get you properly logged through. All right, so I'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody wants to discuss this request with counsel. Just raise your hand if you do. Yes, sir.
My name's Carol Moore, one of the owners of the Moore Building, and have spoken with all the tenants in the building. There's been no negativity, to my knowledge, from any of the occupants there. Certainly, we can use the business, and I think times have changed, and I think that it'll be good for our community, those that like tattoos.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name's Andrew Visera. I, I'm the one applying for the tattoo shop in your city. If there's any questions, I can answer for you.
Yes, just out of curiosity, are you still running the store in Virginia Beach also?
I, I have now closed it down and moved it to Powhatan, Virginia. It's right off of Route 60, about five miles due south from Black Cricket Tattoo Shop, and I have a good friend who is also retired from the Army, running it for me.
What did you want? His address?
Address.
Address.
My personal address?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. It is currently 327 La Salle Avenue.
Okay, any other questions? It's not really a question-and-answer format, so if there's anything you'd like to tell us about-
I would like to have the opportunity to bring in a shop into your, into your city. I tried about a year ago. Unfortunately, I was absent. I'm here today. I think it would be good revenue. We're, we're a classic group, we are, and it's the stem that it has from when I grew up. Tattoo shops were not very good, but it's, it's streaming now, and we'd like to bring the business into the city. I think we'll bring people into the city that normally wouldn't come in for any other reason, other than getting a tattoo, or piercing, or what have you. It's right next to a restaurant. I think we'd bring business to that right after or before. Matter of fact, couple of restaurants, so I, I oblige your approval, and if there's not any other questions, I can-
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address counsel on the subject? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for consideration by counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the establishment of a tattoo and piercing studio at 501 With Creek Road, tax parcel number 18-1-101A.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve the conditional use permit for establishment and operation of the tattoo parlor at 501 With Creek Road, Suite 206. Questions or comments, counsel?
I guess my thoughts are kind of the same reason that I had before, which is, once we, this is a business that's not permitted per ordinance, and once we say, okay, then similar businesses could follow, and I don't feel like we'd have any grounds to say no to it, and we've nev, we've never had this kind of business before, so we don't, that's why I asked Dan in the question of, could we put in something to revisit it in three years or four years and say, how's it going?
So, any thought process down there about modifying your motion to include a time?
Well, I think it's clear that we can revisit it anytime we feel like it. I don't think we need to specify a time. We can revisit this a year, two years, whenever. So, it's already in there that we can do that.
So, Wayne, is that fair?
Well, the ordinance allows you to make it an indefinite conditional use permit, or it can be more definite terms. So, to you as to the way that you have it.
If we, if we didn't-
The ordinance says that if a use is not permitted, then they have to come and add to that use, that there, that the only way we can span the use is within that ordinance is by having a public hearing and doing a conditional use permit.
Okay, so I'm with you there. So, the indefinite term, which appears to be that what we've got here, can counsel revisit that if we don't like the way that it's going?
But if there's a violation of the conditional terms, you can always bring it back up. If the terms that you place on permit are not in compliance, and you have a right to bring it back up and revoke the conditional use permit for violation of the terms, that that can happen at any time. Or you can have a specific review period. If you don't have a specific review period, it's gonna be more indefinite period unless there's a violation of the conditions.
Wayne, and Councilwoman Andrews, my understanding is that if another business, like you're referencing, was to come, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, that would fall under the same ordinance, they too would have to come for a conditional use permit. By us allowing this, that doesn't mean that any future, you know, tattoo or piercing parlors, you know, would just be able to fly right in. They too would have to apply for a conditional use permit.
I do understand that. It would just be hard to say no. It's hard to say no after you've said yes, that was my point.
I think what, what you're saying is it's precedent-setting.
Right.
Okay, and that, that, once we set that precedent, that you have a very hard time unsetting that precedent. Now, I think the precedent that we set, because we've seen this application before.
Right.
So, I think that the precedent that we have set thus far is not on the gateway entrance to the city. I believe is where, the way that we said we don't want to proceed with it last time. So, I think we're solid there, but I think your point is, if it's somewhere else, yeah, it's, it's gonna be difficult to say no more in the future, or at various other locations.
I was just gonna say that generally, as far as I can remember, usually we do conditional use permits until surrendered or revoked, and we're the persons who can revoke it, and the owner or operator can surrender. And that's generally what I think most of them have, have been.
I guess my question is, can we revoke it for, are there only certain particular reasons we could revoke it?
Only if they violate the conditions that are set forward here.
If the condition for use permit, so it has conditions attached to it.
Right.
Okay.
So, those conditions violate, you can revoke the permit for violation of the condition.
Okay, I, I'd like to discuss a little bit further in that we just heard the conditions that we put on this use permit, okay? And I believe it was stated at that time that we can change the conditions or add to them at any time we want to. And so, if there's something that comes up that we're not aware of, that, that's not on there now, we can add a condition anytime we want.
No.
Ms. Chelton, I believe what Dan was trying to convey was that you, as a counsel, have the ability to add or modify conditions now, through this process, not necessarily in the future. That would be a, a separate process, probably associated with a theoretical violation of one of those cited standards, where you might work with the owner to modify a future thing to bring him back into compliance, if there was some specific issue. But I, I believe Dan was really focused on, if you wanted to add a five-year period, you could do that. If you wanted to, I'm just throwing out examples. If you wanted to say Mr. Visera had provided a, to you in your package, hours of operation, if you wanted to incorporate those in the condition, those kinds of things, you could do it this evening prior to adoption.
Okay, then, based on that, yeah, I have no reason why not have that kind of business in the city. However, we've never had that kind of business in the city, and I don't know what might come up in the future. And so, if we can't set the conditions in the future, then I, I think I would join the gentleman and say, I'd like to see a time put on this, and then that'll give us time to see if there's any conditions we need to add.
Wayne, is, is there anything that would prohibit us from including the renewal of the conditional use permit after a certain timeframe? If we wanted to say, you know, two years from the, the date of the approval of the conditional use permit, you have to come back for renewal?
It's your conditional use permit.
Okay.
You have a right to put a condition on it when you approve it, had you deemed appropriate.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if we can-
Renewal.
So, what I, so what I'm suggesting, what I'm hearing is, it's new. Okay, it's different. Not saying that it's, it's wrong or anything else, I'm just saying that it's new and it's done. And that we are, in fact, setting precedent for the future on this. I would like to see us potentially change the motion for a two-year period, so that if it's not working out the way that it is, that it should, which I think it probably will, the, a counsel in the future will have a chance to, to deal with that.
I would think that would put a, give a problem to the building owner, as well as the business, if the only thing we can say is, we, you know, you can be there for two years, and then we don't know. And I'm not sure I'd wanna do that to them.
I originally opposed the first application because of location, and I don't feel like that I'm setting a precedent, a precedent on myself. If I don't, if another tattoo parlor or piercing parlor comes before me, and I don't like the location, I'm gonna vote against that one. And I think it's an unfair restriction to put on a business. I mean, we're hoping he survives, and then we turn around and say, well, come back in two years, and we'll, we'll decide again. I, I don't think that's fair, and I'm not for it.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let it be said publicly, if I can read right from the resolution, section 1, paragraph 1, if at any time this use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, being the local, state, and federal regulations, the city council may revoke this permit.
Correct.
Okay, and then dropping down to section 1, paragraph 5, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. So, I'm comfortable that we are covered as written.
That, that's the section I was looking for, and I thought that was read in there, and I, and I didn't hear that, so-
But we can only amend the conditions tonight. We can't amend them later.
That's, I, I agree, and that's, and that's the confusing point, okay?
Okay.
Well, except our attorney just said-
I, I just don't think that we can, we can unilaterally restart the conditional use permit process, and that's why, and I, I will tell you that I'm a little concerned that I've, we've all done conditional use permits before, and I've seen a lot more conditions than what we've got here, especially dealing with hours of operation. I mean, I've got, we did one for the, for the car wash, you know? We've done, and all I'm saying is, this one seems to be a little on the light side.
Yeah, but the car wash and the other conditions that we put on those businesses were right next to residential units that had bright lights. This is inside a building, regulated heavily by the State of Virginia and the Health Department, and I just think it would be totally unfair to say, come back two, three, four, five years, and we're gonna reconsider this.
All I'm saying is-
I would not treat a business that way.
Are you, are you, are you opposed to adding more conditions? That's all I'm asking.
I'm not opposed to them if they make sense, but so far, I think we've got all the conditions we need.
I'm not opposed, but I don't see that they're necessary in this case.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion made and seconded.
I will say a little bit more in the discussion part. I agree with Mr. Moore that when I was raised, and back in the olden days, you know, like way last century, tattoo parlors didn't have a really good reputation, needed to pool lots. But in the meantime, I think things have changed a lot, and probably, I don't know off the top of my head, 60% of the folks I know, not that I agree with it, but 60% of the people I know either have piercings or tattoos. So, it's, things have changed.
Well, and I wasn't asking because of my thoughts on tattoo parlors, just like the mayor said, because it is a new business, we don't know what it will bring to the city or not bring to the city, and-
Right.
That's why I just wanted, and because we can't change the conditions, and so, I, and I wouldn't make it shorter than whatever their lease is, you know? I'm assuming they have a certain year lease, and, but that's just, I mean, that's just my thoughts.
Okay, anything else? Not, we're gonna go for a roll call, so. Just one quick thing, with regard to Mr. Carol Moore and family, I'm, I'm confident that they will keep things as they should be, as, as the owners of the property. Thank you. Okay. All right, anything else? All right, Evie, please. Again, the motion is to approve it as it's currently written. All right.
Correct, yes, sir. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canelle?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote is carried with a vote of six to one.
Yep, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is under new business, and this is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2019.
I get all the tough acts to follow. In front of you today, you have a request from the superintendents. Last year, they didn't spend $110,000. That was sent back to us, and now they're requesting the funds for various things, grant-related, as well as the visitor bills for two of the schools, and then a few extra dollars for some money that was not supported by grants or the state. So, in front of you, you've got an ordinance re-appropriating the funds.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion that we move forward this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making an additional appropriation and transfer for fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we return $110,000 of unspent money to the schools for them to use for safety. Thank you, that, that was pretty, pretty easy. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelle?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, the next item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate, and to the Planning Commission. Somebody prepare with a motion.
Mr. Mayor, with the direction of the appropriate council members from each precinct, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission with the following names inserted. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, as an alternate, Philip H. Pummel, whose term will expire October 31, 2023. For the Planning Commission, from the Central Precinct, Greg Dever, Kevin Brennan, whose terms will expire November 30, 2022. And from the Western Precinct, Olivia M. Grebel, whose term will expire at the same time, November 30, 2022.
Second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded that we put those folks on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelle?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
So, we modified the agenda to add a resolution, uh, my microphone's on. We modified the agenda to add a resolution for offshore oil drilling. If you don't mind, Randy, if we could go ahead and have Evie read this.
Absolutely.
Evie, do you think you can read this, so the public knows what we're doing?
Certainly, be happy to. A resolution to oppose offshore drilling off the coast of Virginia, whereas the United States Department of the Interior is considering, currently considering, the next iteration of the public ocean, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Ocean Management, five-year oil and gas leasing program, which includes consideration of offshore drilling, whereas the chairman of the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, which is HURUMFA, has expressed the alliance's strong support for excluding the coast of Virginia from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management's next iteration of the five-year oil and gas program, and HURUMFA's strong opposition to any offshore drilling activities that could jeopardize the military's ability to- the military's ability to conduct operations and training off the coast of Virginia, by letter to the Honorable Ryan Zinke, Secretary, United States Department of the Interior, on January 29, 2018, and whereas the Chairwoman of the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, H.R.P.D.C., has expressed on behalf of its 17 local government member jurisdictions, the H.R.P.D.C.'s unanimous opposition to offshore drilling near the Virginia coast, and has requested that all waters off the coast of Virginia be excluded from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management's next interaction of the five-year oil and lease, gas leasing program due to the potential negative impact this activity could have on the military's ability to conduct operations and training, as well as the potential impact that offshore drilling could have on our region's tourism, by letter to the Honorable Ryan Zinke, Secretary, United States Department of the Interior, on February 26, 2018, and whereas the City of Pecosin is a participating member of HURUMFA and H.R.P.D.C., and is supportive of the respective positions of each organization as it relates to offshore drilling for the reasons specified in the above referenced letters to the Secretary of the United States Department of the Interior, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, Section 1, that it hereby endorses the respective positions of HURUMFA and H.R.P.D.C. in opposition to offshore drilling, Section 2, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption."
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, that time. Then, by prepared to make a motion that we move this forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to oppose offshore drilling off the coast of Virginia.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments? Seeing none, E.V., please.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
No.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is comments of the city manager. Randy?
Thank you, sir. Hopefully, the council members all noticed, and, and the community did too, that over the last several days, we've been at work replacing approximately under trees in the main business corridor, primarily on With Creek, a little bit on Victory as well. Project's almost done, so we'll wrap it up this week, and thanks to Tom and Public Works for their quick work on that, and for you all, for the guidance to get that done. Also, just a reminder that later this week, where they're permitting, we will be doing some repaving on With Creek closer to the Hampton side. We'll always have one-lane traffic open, but just a reminder that it'll take us a few days to complete that project, and last week, we were temporarily excited when we thought they were doing some repaving on the Hampton side, but it was actually just a utility relocation, so, but we quickly moved forward, and, and Ms. Andrews, we, we did take your suggestion of, a year or so ago, and, and had some signage ahead of time to, to let people know there were some things happening on the other side of the causeway which might impact their commute, so thank you for that suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items to comment on tonight. First of all, congratulations to our finance director, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, Ms. Robin Bellamy, and the Finance Department for a successful audit. Also, we see in the media the sad state of election affairs held around the country, and I'm very thankful that things are so well-run in our community, and I think the city manager summed it up very well in our manager's weekly report, so I will borrow his words. Congratulations to our registrar, Ms. Tammy Pinckney, everybody in the registrar's office, her electoral board, poll workers, and volunteers on a well-run election. Also, thanks to the Public Works Department for the delivery of the voting machines in the respective precincts and their prompt return. And lastly, I'd like to comment on the Veterans Day ceremony that I was able to attend this past Sunday. I thought it was very well-done. The scenery was great, it was a great patriotic event, very thankful for our veterans, and wanted to thank and compliment the Highway Moore chapter of the American Legion for their efforts with that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Green?
Two things, Mr. Mayor. One, to just add the, add to the kudos for the Finance Department. I tell you, one of the things that impressed me the most about this report is in the last section, where they had no findings, which means there was no deficiencies in any of the categories, and not only that, there were no resolutions of any findings from the previous year, so it, it really speaks highly of our Finance Department. The other thing is to remind everybody that the Mobile Food Pantry is next Tuesday, which is the third Tuesday. It's different from every other month of the year. In November and December, it is, we try to do it before Thanksgiving and before Christmas, so it is next Tuesday from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Old City Hall, and the host this time are the York Pecoson Social Services.
Excellent. Councilman Canela?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to echo the comments made by Councilman Hux and, and Councilman Green in, in regards to our city staff, and that, that's it.
Okay. Councilman Southall?
Yeah, I'd like to second all the comments made so far, and offer my sincere congratulations to Pat Green and Bill Close on awards that are extremely well-deserved.
Councilwoman Andrews?
I guess I'll third the comments, and just wanted to say thank you to our veterans for their service, and the men and women currently serving, and also their families who provide the support to allow them to, to serve our country.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, what I had has already been said. I was going to comment on how quickly and professionally we get the voting done, and Memorial Day service was really, really nice and well-done. Other thing was, just wanted to thank everybody that voted for me. I appreciate that, so thank you.
Well, it was either you or Donald Duck, so, you were on the post, so, but, but, well said, and I, I congratulate all the councilmen that were re-elected. Great job to you. Clean election, y'all didn't throw stones at each other or anything, so, so I really appreciate that. Clean campaign. But no signs, I, you know, y'all are just fabulous. I will say to the citizens, have patience and plan ahead for With Creek Road, okay? It is our main corridor. It is going to be repaved, it needs to be repaved. Unfortunately, we're having to pave it because of delays in improving With Creek Road by VDOT. It's going to seem somewhat, and it, and it is intentional, but the road base is going to fail on us if we don't do it. We're going to put down some new pavement. Your commute is going to be affected, it's going to be affected for about four to five days, okay? So, be, be prepared for it, be patient with us while we get that necessary corridor done, and then hopefully, VDOT will get to us in about 2020, at the start, the other side, which was supposed to be in 2017, I believe, so, all right. So, with that said, I echo all the comments on, on Veterans Day. I'm sorry, I could not attend this year, but Veterans Day ceremony and everything that the city has done, great audit report. Jennifer, I see you hiding in the back. Thank you for having $110,000 left over at the end of the fiscal year that we could give back to you for security, but that basically tells me that you're, you're operating exactly where you say you're going to be, and that we've got a good plan for that. So, thank you for all of that, and I will ask for a me, a motion to adjourn. So moved, Mr. Mayor? Second. Okay. E.V., please.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, then we are adjourned.